Hello, my name is Dr. Daria Babanou, also known as Dr. B. It is my honor to welcome you to our Rio Grande City CISD Town Hall meeting. We, the Board of Directors and your Superintendent of Schools, recognize that this is a time when our community has suffered many hardships affecting so many of us. For our students, especially our 2020 graduates, our nation's COVID-19 health crisis has forced them to endure so many new experiences like virtual learning, online ceremonies, and even drive-through graduations. For all of these inconveniences, we are truly sorry, but want you to know that we are still very, very proud of you. You are still our biggest priority, and we want you to know that we have been working very hard to maintain the highest levels of quality education while making sure that we continue to protect your health and safety, as well as the health and safety of your family. For those affected by the recent financial crisis, those who may have recently lost their job, our small business owners like myself who have also suffered, we, as the county's largest employer, are working to set a standard of financial stability on which our community can grow upon. But most importantly, for those affected by the recent severe weather, who may have lost their most valuable possessions and even their homes, there are no words that can replace what you have lost, but please know that you are in our thoughts and prayers for the future of our community. The time for politics has passed. It is going to take more than one side, one team, one party to heal the wounds that we have all suffered, but we can do it. We can move forward together. It is only in our darkest hours that we may discover the true strength of the brilliant light within ourselves that can never, ever be dimmed. And if there is one thing that I have learned from every rattler, gator, and cougar that we have ever made, that's pride. And I have pride in every one of our students, pride in our district's ability to get us through this crisis, but most importantly, pride in our community, my community, and its ability to care and heal one another. We will get through this together. We are Rio Grande City CISD, and when times get tough, we keep fighting.
Good morning, everyone. I would like to start by introducing Mr. RC Salinas. He will be our moderator for this event. Mr. Salinas?
Thank you, Mrs. Garza. Good morning to all of you. Buenos dias, tengan todos bienvenidos a esta junta de la comunidad porque los hemos invitado para que vengan, para que tengan reconocimiento y que puedan contribuir ustedes con sus ideas a los propósitos que tiene la Mesa Directiva y la Superintendenta, la señora Garza, para el progreso del distrito escolar comenzando ya desde el primero de junio, el lunes, Dios mediante. Así es que bienvenidos todos. Thank you, Mrs. Garza.
You're welcome, Dr. Mr. Salinas. Let me first begin by saying thank you to our parents for their patience and understanding. This pandemic has changed our lives and the way we operate our schools. We are going through difficult and challenging times. When we first learned about the pandemic in China, we knew that this was coming our way. We just did not know when it was going to get to our community. Our local official and health authority started organizing meetings with superintendents, local officials, and medical officials to discuss how we were going to handle this pandemic when it arrived in our community. We, as a district, started surveying our parents, wanting to find out how many of our parents had technology, how many of our parents had internet connection, and for those that perhaps were not going to be able to join us virtually, we started putting together instructional packages for our parents in case that we would not return back in back from spring break, and that is exactly what happened. We started having conversations with our TA Commissioner because we had so many concerns about attendance, program requirements, funding. We had so many concerns about the safety of our children and our staff, and with the authority of the state, we were able to have flexibility and we were able to meet all the programs' requirements. I salute all our parents for the hard work and their dedication in this stressful time. They were champions for our children. I know it's been tough and it's been challenging for everyone in our community. As we approached the end of the school year, the governor actually issued a new executive order that allowed few of our staff members and our teachers to come back into our facilities to end our school year activities. With that, our campus principals and staff, teachers became creative. They started car parades in our neighborhoods to show our children that they missed them terribly. They wanted to see their faces, even if it was through the car window. They wanted to show that we truly appreciated every single family for the hard work that they were doing in providing home learning. They started with curbside events to acknowledge all the hard work and effort that our children dedicated themselves in education by providing awards for honorable and perfect attendance. Some of our campuses are still working on it, and we will recognize every single student for honorable and perfect attendance. And our seniors, we knew this was a special moment for our seniors. We wanted to provide as much as we could to make it enjoyable and memorable. We know this is going to be history. Our seniors will be making history, and we'll be talking about their events. We started with virtual ceremonies, recognizing top 10, recognizing our top 10%, even a virtual prom. It was a phenomenal event. I, myself personally, enjoyed, brought back so many memories. And our car parade graduation, the toughest decision to make, but our county superintendents came together with our county official to decide on what was the best method to provide a graduation to our seniors. And for the safety of all our students and our staff, this was the best that we could do at this moment. Will we consider a graduation in our stadiums in the future? Perhaps in the winter, but again, it all depends on the situation at that point in time. As the year progressed, we received more guidance by TA. We continued to get guidance on summer school. The new executive order allowed us options for summer school, and at the moment, we are discussing about reopening our schools. The executive order at the moment is going to dictate what number of children can come, how many children can come into our schools. And again, it's a limit. We have to be, we have to make sure that sanitizing stations are available, that we disinfect more often, that we design routes to enter and exit our buildings, that we screen all our children, that our lunch program takes place in our classrooms, that we do not have large assemblies or gatherings or activities. This is what the executive order has in place at the moment. Things can change, but again, we are going to provide options. We will be surveying our parents to find out how many parents want their children to come into school and how many parents want virtual learning. It will be an option for the fall. Starting Monday, we will have a task force in place to explore all the options. As I mentioned, TA, along with all the superintendents in the state of Texas, come together to discuss options. Our calendar may be affected as well. We may have to add more winter breaks, start earlier. Again, with the task force in place, administration, principals will get together to formulate a plan. Once the plan is finalized, we will share the plan with our local officials and our health authority to make sure that we have addressed every safety and health protocol to ensure the safety of all our students and our staff. I ask and I urge everyone to please stay informed. We post information as we receive the information on our school Facebook page, our school district webpage, our local newspapers, our Twitter account. We send blast emails to those parents who have emails, text messages through school messenger, even audio recordings. And please, if you have any questions or concerns, we have also posted a phone directory, which we call COVID-19 Phone Directory. We have phone numbers for our campuses and our central administration offices. Please do not hesitate to call. We are in it together, and together we will get through this.
Thank you so much. At this time, Dr. Mr. Salinas?
Lo más importante que dijo la señora Garza, Superintendente, dos cosas: lo difícil que fue esto al principio y que las cosas todavía pueden cambiar. Están que pueden cambiar de un momento a otro. No hay nada que esté escrito en oro o en cemento. La situación puede cambiar. Se ha pasado por muchos problemas, pero como quiera, ha salido el distrito adelante. Los maestros nunca dejaron de mostrar su interés y su cariño para con los alumnos. Tuvieron desfiles, parades, como les llamamos, por todas las colonias y los barrios, pitándole a los estudiantes para decirles: "Los queremos mucho, los extrañamos bastante". Eso fue algo magnífico, hizo el personal de aquí. Cuando llegó el tiempo de las graduaciones, era imposible darle gusto a todos porque estábamos impuestos a cierto tipo de graduaciones y se tuvo que hacer lo que tenía que hacerse. Por eso tenemos una Superintendenta de Escuelas porque a ella le toca hacer la decisión. Bajo la dirección de su Mesa Directiva, era ella la que lo tiene que hacer, y el personal sigue porque confía en su habilidad. Y este, pero ha dicho cosas muy importantes, que si va a haber escuela de verano, va a tener que hacerse ciertos ajustes de que los niños coman en el salón de clase, en lugar de ir al cafetería. Quizá va a haber un reglamento de cuántos alumnos pueden asistir, pero va a tener que haber estaciones donde los niños puedan lavarse las manos, donde pueda haber sanidad y que pueda mantenerse todo lo más limpio posible, desinfectando los salones de clases antes y después de las clases y todo. No es una tarea fácil, es una tarea que nos envuelve a toda la comunidad. Nadie puede decir: "Es así o no". Todos nosotros estamos en esto. Bajo la dirección del estado, bajo la dirección del School Board y la Superintendenta, tenemos que hacer lo mejor posible para sacar el distrito adelante. Ojalá, Dios quiera, que el año que viene no sea igual que te acaba de pasar, pero nunca sabemos. Tenemos que estar listos, pero acuérdense que ha habido situaciones en el pasado. Imagínense cuando pegó viula, las escuelas se cerraron por casi un mes, y no fue el fin del mundo. En 1942, la primer clase que graduó en tiempo de guerra ya se habían ido muchos sinios para el ejército, y sin embargo, se hizo la cebolla en el kiosco de Río Grande. Cuando han venido problemas o adversidades, la comunidad ha salido adelante. Siempre hemos tenido líderes. En aquel tiempo, el señor Baker; en el tiempo de viula, el señor de la Garza, y ahora te toca a ti, Mrs. Garza, este, el paquete. Pero todos juntos tenemos que ayudar para sacar el distrito adelante, porque si el distrito sale adelante, todos quedamos bien. Y el distrito se cae, todos quedamos mal. Así es que ánimo, padres de familia que me escuchan, acuérdense que ustedes son socios de nosotros en todo esto. Nadie se queda atrás. Sin ustedes, no se va a poder hacer. Gracias.
Thank you, Dr. Mr. Salinas. At this time, we will have our Health Director, Rolando Barrera, who will share information about our health and safety protocols in our schools. Mr. Barrera?
Yes, thank you. Good morning. My name is Rolando Barrera. Once again, we, our district would like to remind and reassure everybody that our main top priority is the health and safety for all our students, staff, and community. Every decision that has been made through our district is to keep everybody as safe as possible, okay? When school starts, there will be some guidelines and measures that need to be made in order to keep our campus and district as safe as possible as well. Some of these guidelines include social distancing, increasing hand washing, placement of hand sanitizers throughout our districts, frequent more cleaning and disinfecting, especially our areas such as our tables, doorknobs, anything that is highly touched. Health screens will be needed when kids enter the schools. At the moment, we're looking at temperature checks for every single student, okay? Signage, continued signage that reminds everybody on safety measures that they need to do, for example, covering your cuff, staying home when sick. We want to make sure that all these measures are in place to keep kids as safe as possible, okay? Right now, our RGCC ISD health staff is a great, great department, and we do magnificent throughout the school year. For all our nursing staff, all of them are, have experience and the compassion that is needed to care for every single student and staff member at our campuses. Currently, we have nine registered nurses throughout our district, 10 licensed vocational nurses as well, and 24 nursing assistants. All of them, once again, are highly capable to care for every student and staff member that we have in our districts. As Ms. Garza stated, there will be a task force, and the task force is going to be consisted of administrators, principals, everybody that has input on how to best open our campuses and the best procedures, and of course, there would have to be a Plan B. Everything that we do will be in accordance with any federal, state, and local recommendations in order to keep everybody as safe as possible. Once again, what we do at school, we also want to encourage in our community. You know, covering, using face coverings is extremely important, increasing your hand washing is extremely important, avoiding contact with people that are sick, you staying home if you are sick, and calling your healthcare provider for further guidance when feeling sick. Just because we do it at school doesn't mean that we don't have to do it at home. Everybody needs to do their part to prevent and any spread of any respiratory illnesses like COVID-19. Once again, thank you, everybody from our RGCC ISD community for your continued support. Stay safe.
Thank you, Mr. Barrera. El señor Barrera nos acaba de dar unos puntos, si quisiera hacer hincapié de lo más relevante de lo que él dijo. Dice que en la escuela, como quiera que sea, se va a seguir practicando el distanciamiento. Lo que hacemos afuera, de mantener seis pies de distancia, se les va a pedir a los alumnos que se preparen para hacer lo mismo. Vamos a seguir con la frecuencia de lavar manos, la limpieza en todo lo que se pueda, la limpieza en el salón de clase, y a checar temperaturas, señor Barrera, si le entendí bien. Y estamos pidiendo que en la casa, que los alumnos no tengan contactos con personas enfermas, y si hay enfermedad de cualquiera, de tipo de parexer índole, que los niños se queden en la casa, ahí también, en lugar de venir a la escuela. Eso se les pide. Y el señor Barrera enfocó de que el distrito cuenta con un número suficiente de personal capacitado, de enfermeros registrados y titulares y asistentes, que hay bastante personal para cubrir las necesidades de la salud. El programa está bien, pero si ustedes tienen recomendaciones, no dejen de comunicarse con él o con la señora Garza.
Thank you, Mr. Salinas. At this time, Gina Gonzalez will give information about our summer school program. Ms. Gonzalez?
Thank you, Ms. Garza. RGCC ISD will be offering several summer programs in June. Of these programs, we're going to continue with the remedial summer school for first through 12th grade. We're going to have a pre-kindre for and a kinder remedial summer school. We're going to have credit recovery for high schools, and this is for our seniors as well so that they can make sure that they graduate, and we're going to run credit recovery all the way through August 31st. We're going to open up our special education self-contained units via virtual classroom. We will have migrant Project Smart for all migrant students across the district. We will service three- and four-year-old migrant students through the Bright Beginning Program. We will also have elementary and middle school gifted and talented enrichment program. We will have counseling and library services via Zoom. We will also conduct the 21st Century Programs for Veterans Middle School, Ringo Middle School, Gruia Middle School, and Gruia High School. We will continue with our child nutrition program. AP and pre-AP teachers will have staff development training, bilingual English language arts supplemental activities for all our bilingual staff, dual-language program activities for our teachers. We will be revamping the state gifted and talented plan, an extensive curriculum writing, and every campus will be running summer school from Monday through Thursday, June 1st through June 25th. Pre-kindre and kinder will run Monday through Friday, June 1st through June 26th. Elementary school hours will begin at 9:30 and end at 3:30. Middle school and high school hours will begin at 11:30 and end at 5:30. Credit recovery will run, like I said, through August 31st, and the time is a rotation time. We're being very flexible with our seniors so that they can complete their coursework by the end of August. We were asked a question: who can attend summer school? Students who failed one or more subjects during the school year can attend. Anyone needing remedial reading or math, migrant, bilingual, gifted and talented, at-risk, and special education students, and of course, our pre-K4 and kinder students. All summer school programs will be conducted virtually. We will have information on our district webpage by grade level so that the daily schedule will be posted. Parents, you'll know exactly when to log on, what activities to do throughout the day, and we will also have a face-to-face instruction by our teachers. How do you access the curriculum? Like I said, it'll be on our webpage. Go to RGCCISD.org, and you will see Summer School 2020, and then it'll be divided by grade level. We had a question also on connectivity: will laptops be provided for our students? Yes, we have purchased 2,300 laptops, and we will be passing those out as soon as they arrive to all summer school children. I think that's all I have. Thank you.
Mrs. Gonzalez, that's quite a program.
Lo que sí queremos decir para que todos lo entienden bien, que es muy importante que puedan entrar a una computadora, pueden ir a las bibliotecas, la biblioteca de la ciudad, o como puedan, para entrar a lo que se dice RGCCISD.org para que vean el contenido, para que vean el mundo que tenemos aquí para la escuela del verano. Hay programas para todos, los necesitan ustedes ver en el periódico o en el RGCCISD.org, la cantidad de programas que tenemos, porque quién puede venir? Todos los que necesiten ayuda, de primero a doce, ayuda primario, que se llama, para los de kinder también, para credit recovery, los que les falta créditos para pasar de un grado a otro, para graduar, para la educación especial, y en el programa de los inmigrantes vamos a tener Proyecto Smart, que siempre se ha tenido en cada año, y también un programa especial para los de tres a cuatro años. Hay algo muy importante que necesitan saber: el programa va a tener servicios de consejería social emocional en el verano. Esto es algo nuevo. Sabemos que los últimos tres meses han sido meses de tensión en las casas, que no pueden salir, tienen todos que quedarse ahí, entonces traten de aprovechar de este programa, que vamos a tener personal capacitados y competentes para dar servicios de consejería social y emocional, y por eso, o vienen a la oficina de Mrs. Gonzalez aquí en el campo, o que se fijen en el RGCCISD.org donde pueden ver todo lo que se necesita, y hay números de teléfono a donde ustedes pueden llamar. Está muy extenso todo lo que se está ofreciendo a través de los programas federales, pero hay para todos. Otra cosa muy importante que sepan, que para los niños de primaria o elementary, que le decimos, las horas son de nueve y media a las tres y media, y para los de middle school y high school, de once y media a las cinco y media. Y credit recovery también, más o menos, las mismas horas, pero repito que todo esto lo pueden leer en los webpages o en el periódico porque todo va a salir ahí. Así es que, Mrs. Gonzalez, good luck. Que Dios le ayude. Y si tienen algunas preguntas, los padres se pueden comunicar con ella o checar el periódico o el webpage, pero hay bastante. El distrito está dando, como quien diría, una caja de tesoros. Ahí está. Como diríamos en inglés, "It's there for the taking, guys". Así es que mucho éxito para todos los programas federales.
I do want to add that all campus principals will be identifying and reaching out, identifying the students that are eligible and reaching out to our parents to make sure that they participate in our programs. At this time, Elsa Morris will give more detail about our high school summer program. Ms. Morris?
Thank you. Good morning. My name is Elsa Morris, like she mentioned. I am in charge of accountability assessment and school improvement, which is a little bit about of everything Mr. Salinas asked me earlier. What is it that you do? A little bit of everything, so I'm gonna just share some information that is important to the parents regarding why they need to come to credit recovery, why they need to send their seniors, and most of all, any student that is in ninth, 10th, and 11th grade that may have failed an EOC subject. So I want to make sure that I explain that to you. Graduation 2020 reminder: if there are any seniors who did not complete their credits to graduate from the early college, Gruia High School, or Rio High School, you have until August 31st to be able to graduate. Doesn't mean that you cannot come back next year and finish, no. What this means is if you want to take advantage of the first-time-ever COVID waiver for end-of-course exams, prior to COVID, all seniors in order to graduate needed to pass five exams: English I, English II, algebra, US history, and biology. Well, when COVID came into place, the testing ceased to happen. Because it didn't happen, the state said, "We are giving you all a one-time waiver", however, that waiver expires on August 31st. So if we have a senior who does not complete their credits by August 31st, then that senior becomes a fifth-year student, and then they become responsible for all five exams. That is why, as Ms. Gina Gonzalez explained earlier, we are having credit recovery until August 31st, to try to complete as many seniors as possible who are pending credits. This way, they would not be responsible for that end-of-course exam that was normally required to graduate. And this, this will expire, like I said, August 31st, so it's important if they're pending credits that they do complete that. We also received some new guidance as far as seniors for 2020. If a senior is intending to graduate in the mode that I just mentioned to you, if they're going to graduate and are missing an exam, then the parent and the child needs to make contact, and I'm sure that has already been done, but I want to share that with the parents that in case you have not been contacted, to sign some paperwork from your high school counselor because your child is missing an exam, you have until June 10th to sign that paperwork so that we can initiate an IGC. What an IGC is, is an individual graduation committee. It is a plan. It's a mode or a way to graduate. They sign the plan, and you indicate to us that you're wishing to graduate under individual graduation committee, and we will waive those exams that your son or daughter is pending. But it's very important that that paperwork be signed by June 10th. Why are we doing credit recovery? Let me just review why, and I know that Ms. Gina Gonzalez already covered this. Because of COVID-19, Star EOC issued a waiver, and what EOC is, is the end-of-course exam for the subjects that I mentioned. Students must pass all Students must pass all courses with an EOC assessment in English, English I, II, Algebra, US History, and Biology to qualify for this waiver. This is for our students that are in ninth grade, 10th grade, and 11th grade that are enrolled in these subjects. High school students still experiencing trouble with access can contact the district, and we will provide the technology. We will provide resources as far as maybe you may need internet. We will be providing those things because we're trying to get as many students to take advantage of this waiver. We don't know if this waiver will continue, so we want to make sure that our students take advantage of that waiver. We recently completed Phase One, which is our seniors who needed a diploma have completed, and we still have some students, like she mentioned, who are in progress. I know that one of the graduation days, we had a student who finished at four o'clock in the morning. His graduation was that morning at nine o'clock. So he was able to complete all his credits and graduate. Does that mean that they still can't get a diploma if they didn't finish by the graduation date? No. All of our seniors have till August 31st to complete and not be responsible for those exams. That is the main message we're trying to get across to the parents, that they understand that it's important for all students in ninth through 12 who took a subject, either English I, English II, Biology, US History, and Biology, US History, that took that course, that they complete the course so they can take advantage of the waiver. In addition, we have Gear Up, who also falls under my department. We have a Gear Up campus. It was in Grúia Middle School. That camp, or that Gear Up program is moving to Grúia High School now. Gear Up is something that is implemented from the US Department of Education through Region One. We have one middle school that qualified for the Gear Up grant, and that was Grúia Middle School. We started with our students in seventh grade. Those students are now going to ninth grade. So these students will be engaged in, normally what we would have is a summer bridge program, but because we will not have any in-person summer school, all of their Gear Up cohort students will be engaged in virtual summer school camps. And for more information, you can contact Rachel Salinas. She will now be available, and she will now be working out of Grúia High School. As far as what are the virtual bridge camps, there are different ones. There are different slots. Rio Grande City, since we are one of the participating districts, they have given us slots for all the different camps that are available. And this would normally have been an in-person experience, but because of the COVID-19, Region One has also decided to do theirs virtual. So for more information, you can contact our Gear Up coordinator, Rachel Salinas. Please ensure that you are active, that you actively begin recruiting the students. If you have not been contacted by Ms. Rachel Salinas, or you have not attended any of these camps, then it's a good time, parents, to reach out to her and let her know that your son or daughter is interested. You will have to provide your name, your phone number, and more than likely, your email so that she will know that you are interested in these camps. And this is only for Grúia High School students. And there will be other things going on throughout the summer, and she will be contacting you. But if you would like your students to participate in any of these camps, please let us know so that we can include your son or daughter in these camps. These are professional development. Because we also have the Gear Up at Grúia High School, Grúia High School teachers that are teaching core area will now be able to take advantage of staff development specific to our Gear Up students. What the program does, it supports the teacher so that the teacher can in turn support the student. All of this, this year, being done virtually, unfortunately, but we are not gonna stop. We're gonna continue full force with Gear Up regardless of whether we are in person or virtually. And that's all I have for you all. If anybody has any questions, I can be reached at Elsa, E-L-S-A-V, as in Victor, at rgccisd.org. Thank you.
Mr. Salinas?
Wow. I'll never ask you again, Elsa. Okay. Lo más importante fue lo último que dijo. The Gear Up program, porque va a ser en una escuela solamente. The Gear Up program is para ayudar estudiantes que tengan la oportunidad de ir a la universidad y que salgan bien preparados. Entonces, la escuela que primero calificó fue Grúia Middle, y ahora los que empezaron en siete ya están en high school. Y aquí es muy fácil. Necesitas más información de este programa, te comunicas con Rachel Salinas at Grúia High School. Y si ella no se ha comunicado contigo, y tú quieres este programa para tus hijos porque quieres que tengan buen futuro, especialmente los padres que están en nuestra área, este allá, en aquella parte del distrito de García Esbel, La Casita, La Grúia, todas esas áreas. Esta es una oportunidad magnífica de prepararte para el colegio. Este, tú puedes comunicarte con ella. Ahí se encuentra en Grúia High School para darte la información que necesites para este programa. Sí, puedes comunicarte con la señora Morris, con Elsa, pero también si vives en aquella área, haz el esfuerzo de ir a Grúia High School y comunícate con Rachel directamente para que puedas enlistar a tu hijo o tu hija en ese programa porque es un gran programa. Y este, qué bueno que lo tenemos ahí en La Grúia. Qué bueno que lo tenemos. Felicito a usted con eso. Lo demás, el programa que tiene ella, los seniors que les faltan créditos para graduar, tienen hasta el 31 de agosto para aprovecharse de la licencia que les da el Estado de Texas para que no tengan que pasar, todos por ley tienen que pasar cinco exámenes en las distintas materias del inglés, la matemática, la historia, la ciencia, etc. Pero, por lo que ha pasado este año, el Estado da una dispensa. Pero si vas a lograr esa dispensa, tú, senior, estás oyendo, tus padres que están oyendo, tienen hasta el día 10 de junio para lograr esa oportunidad que te da el Estado de Texas para que puedas graduar sin pasar esos cursos. Esto es algo que nunca había pasado, pero la situación, como quien dice, la situación te hace que tengas que experimentar. Y entonces el Estado te da licencia de que puedas terminar libremente, pero queremos que tengas tu diploma de high school a seguir tus estudios. Y si tienes problemas, si quieres saber más de esto, por favor comunícate con la señora Elsa Morris aquí en el distrito. Comunícate con la operadora central y que pidan a Mrs. Morris directamente para que te pueda decir lo que tienes que hacer. Recuerda que tienes hasta el día 10 de junio y haz la vuelta de la esquina para que puedas lograr lo que el Estado te está dando, y lográlo, porque si te falta, ¿y tienes con qué? Good luck with that.
Thank you, Mr. Salinas. At this time, Jesús Martínez will talk about registration. We are so eager to enroll so many students. We are looking forward to having all our families. Please enroll your students in our school system. We have the best education that you can receive. We are going to offer at the elementary music and art as soon as we get back to some type of normalcy. But I do encourage all our parents to enroll their students. We will be offering school free, school supplies free. You do not have to worry about school supplies. We will have something designed where our teachers will get the resources for your students, for your children. So Jesús Martínez, would you please enlighten us with registration?
Thank you, Ms. Garza. As you all know, our district continues moving forward. So we're now offering online registration for 2020, 2021. Parents need to go to the rgccisd.org, our website. In there, towards the middle of the page, you will see that online registration. And then you will see two statements when you click on that. Those statements are at the bottom, returning students only and students new to RGCCISD. At this point, I do want to clarify that pre-K3, which are students new to the district, parents have to click on the second one, which is new to the district. When parents click on new to the district, they have to create an account. This is only for new students to district. And I want to, you know, clarify that again. Any student, whether it be pre-K3, or we have new pre-K4, new kinder, or in the upper grade levels, middle school, high school, they have to create an account. Any other student that has already been attending our school district, if we go to the next slide, then they will get a SNAP code. That SNAP code has been sent to the parent's email. All campuses, the parents should have provided an email, and they should have received by now a SNAP code, which is a 15-character between numbers and letters. If you have not received that number, you need to call the data processing department, and the phone number is 716-6832. Like I said, all students that have already been attending our school district, they need that SNAP code. There is a tutorial, and that tutorial is a six-step process that guides the parents on what to do step by step to register the students. If you look on the top of the page, there is a little, like a little ball, a little icon. It says English. If you click on that little icon, it will switch the instructions to Spanish. So it is available in English. It is available in Spanish, this tutorial. We are going into our second year, offering our new three-year-old program. So we are encouraging all parents, whose children will be three by September the 1st, to please register the students in our school district. We have a wonderful three-year-old program with wonderful certified teachers that provide different instruction for our students, engaging preschool curriculum, reading skills, literacy, math, science, social studies. They have the opportunity to learn a second language. Also opportunities for cognitive and social and emotional and nutritional health and other types of information that our teachers provide to our pre-K3. We do have computer programs, art, music, different activities like sports. Even if we have to do them virtually, that is also available. And so we ask all our parents to please go to our website and please register our pre-K3. There is a state criteria that students must qualify for, but we will be working with all our students in pre-K3 to bring them to our school district and provide the best education possible. This information will also come out in the newspaper and our website pretty soon. And that's all I have, Ms. Garza. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Martínez. Mr. Salinas?
Muy bien, padres. El señor Martínez enfocó en esto, que, no, la señora Garza dijo que va del programa de arte y de música. Y es muy importante que los estudiantes sean inscritos, or enrolled, como diríamos, lo más pronto posible, y que no se mortifiquen. Los materiales van a ser gratis para todo alumno. No hay gasto para ti. Pero es muy importante que vayas a inscribir al alumno, y se te va a dar los materiales cuando el niño sea listo para empezar la escuela. Nadie se va a quedar, no hay excusa para no poder asistir. Y este, como dijo el señor Martínez, todos los estudiantes nuevos tienen que crear una cuenta nueva. Una cuenta nueva. Todos tienen su SNAP code. Lo van a tener y lo van a poder utilizar. En el proceso, si tú entras o te dice rgccisd.org, va a haber un tutorial, o sea, un programa que te lleva paso por paso para que puedas saber cómo hacerlo en inglés o en español. Y no es cosa del otro mundo. Es algo muy sencillo. Es algo muy sencillo, así es que se puede hacer. Pero lo importante es de que puedas inscribirlo lo más pronto posible, y así para saber con cuántos alumnos vamos a contar. Y este, también para los de tres años, hay un programa, como dijo el señor Martínez, muy extenso en todo sentido de la palabra, que va a incluir todo. Aunque digas tú que pueden aprender a los tres años bastante, porque tienen todo un programa que va a cubrir las habilidades de lectura, las habilidades manuales, lo que sea, pero se empiezan bien. Gracias. Thank you.
As we all know, we have special population of students, and Ms. García will provide information about our program requirements. Ms. García?
Thank you, Ms. Garza. Good morning to everyone, and thank you for joining us this morning. The main focus in our special education program continues to be to provide a free and appropriate public education to all students with disabilities as required by law. As we already know, the special education program has faced many challenges during this difficult time because of the school closures, the distance learning, but most importantly, because of the fact that the US Department of Education did not grant any waivers or extensions to any of our special education timelines. One main concern that was expressed by many, including our parents, has been that how we were going to proceed with the special education student evaluations that were still pending. Despite the many challenges that we faced as we looked over this information, and thanks to the explicit guidance that was provided to us by our Texas Education Agency and the Region One Education Service Center personnel, and of course, thanks to the hard work and dedication of our special education teachers and our assessment team, we were able to finalize all the evaluations that were annual evaluations and the three-year reevaluations for all the students in our school district. So I am happy to inform that to all the parents. However, I do need to reiterate that for the full and individual initial evaluations that were referred to our program prior to the spring break or prior to the closing of our schools, we are still pending their completion. The parents, however, were provided with a very explicit, prior written notice informing them about the findings and about the assessments that we were able to provide to our students, those that were completed and the ones that were still pending, and the reasons why those assessments were not completed. And obviously, the most important reason why they were not completed was because we needed to have the face-to-face interaction with the students. So I want to reiterate to our parents that as soon as we return back to school, as soon as we reopen our schools, we are going to make sure that these initial evaluations that are still pending take top priority so that we can provide eligibility to those students who qualify for the program. Now, in addition to those initial evaluations that are pending, we still have to make sure that we look at the loss of student skills in academics and related services. Okay, so once we reopen the schools, we are also going to focus on evaluating our students to decide whether we had any loss of academic and/or related services skills that took place while we were engaged in distance learning. And if that is the case, I assure you that we are going to provide COVID response services as needed for every student. These services will probably be provided either after hours or on Saturdays to ensure that we meet the requirements for each one of the children in our program. Please be reminded that we are here to provide a service to your children. So if you ever have any questions, any concerns, do not hesitate to contact us at 956-716-6661, or you can email me at mgarcia042@rgccisd.org. We are here to provide a service to your children, so we are always available for them. Now, I also want to give this message in Spanish for the benefit of our parents who need an explanation as to what's taking place in our department. So, buenos días a todos nuestros padres de familia. Quiero asegurarles que el enfoque principal en nuestro departamento continúa siendo el proporcionar una educación pública, gratuita, y apropiada a todos los estudiantes con discapacidades según lo exige la ley. Como todos sabemos, los programas de educación especial enfrentaron muchos retos durante estos momentos difíciles por el cierre de escuelas, el aprendizaje a distancia, pero sobre todo por el hecho de que el Departamento de Educación de Estados Unidos no otorgó ninguna extensión o extensión a los plazos de educación especial, haciendo nuestro trabajo un poco más difícil. Por esta razón, es una de las principales preocupaciones que fue expresado por mucha gente, incluyendo nosotros, nuestros padres de familia, fue cómo íbamos a proceder con las evaluaciones de estudiantes de educación especial. A pesar de muchos desafíos que enfrentamos, pero gracias a la guía explícita que tuvimos de la Agencia Educacional de Texas y del Centro Educativo de nuestra región, y por supuesto, a la dedicación y trabajo de todos nuestros maestros y el equipo de evaluación en nuestro departamento, quiero asegurar a nuestros padres de familia de que todas las evaluaciones anuales y de tres años fueron completadas durante este año escolar. Pero les quiero también avisar de que las evaluaciones iniciales que se entregaron a nuestra oficina antes de las vacaciones y antes de que cerráramos las escuelas, estas evaluaciones no han sido completadas hasta el momento. Sin embargo, en cuanto regresemos a la escuela, en cuanto abramos nuestras escuelas, estas evaluaciones iniciales... estas evaluaciones iniciales van a ser dadas una prioridad para estar seguros de que completamos su finalización. También para determinar si nuestros estudiantes han podido tener todos los requisitos para que califiquen para este programa. Además de las evaluaciones que tenemos pendientes, también tenemos los servicios compensatorios que tenemos que evaluar para nuestros estudiantes. Cuando abramos las escuelas, nos vamos a enfocar en evaluar a nuestros estudiantes para revisar o para decidir si ha habido pérdida de habilidades académicas y de servicios relacionados durante el tiempo que tuvimos nuestras escuelas cerradas y que estuvimos involucrados en el aprendizaje a distancia. Estamos aquí para brindarle un apoyo a sus hijos, y si esta determina que debemos servicios compensatorios a sus hijos, entonces vamos a hacer que esto pase durante el año escolar, ya sea después de horas de escuela o durante los sábados. Les recordamos a todos ustedes que estamos aquí para proveer un servicio a todos sus hijos, para ayudarlos, y si tienen alguna pregunta, no dejen de llamar a nuestra oficina al (956) 716-6661, o pueden comunicarse conmigo a mi correo electrónico, Muchas gracias por su atención.
Mr. Salinas?
Pues al oí lo que estaba diciendo la señora García, pienso yo que me tocó a mí estar presente cuando empezó el Departamento de Special Ed. Una mesa, cuatro sías, una maestra, Alicia Clark. Y esto fue el 61. Y desde eso hasta ahorita, realmente, Ms. Garza, tenemos algo monumental. Y sobre todo, que los niños que más necesitan la ayuda, el distrito no se olvida de ellos. Los que más han batallado con sus clases ahí es el departamento para ayudarles con sus deshabilidades. So, well done.
I know everybody is waiting to hear about our footballs, baseball, all our different sports and band. Today with us is Mr. Ray Ramírez. He will be talking and giving information on our UIL programs. Mr. Ramírez?
Thank you, Ms. Garza, and good morning to everyone. Two things I'd like to focus on this morning is, one, when are we starting our summer strength and conditioning program? And two, are we going to offer or be ready to start our fall sports? First thing is first, we need to be prepared, first of all, and to have our facilities disinfected, our athletes trained on how to come in as far as, you know, hand sanitation stations, temperature checks, and procedures that we're going to be implementing to ensure the safety of our athletes, or student athletes, or all our athletes for that matter. With that being said, I want to reassure our student athletes and our parents that we are working on a plan of action with the guidance of the UIL, the advice of athletic trainers, our athletic coordinators, and administration to ensure that their athletes are able to safely return to in-person training. Okay, during this uncertain time, it is important to realize that preparation and safety of our students is our number-one priority. As you may know, UIL has already set a date of starting strength and conditioning, summer strength and conditioning for June the 8th. That is an option for the local school district, depending on their local situation. At this time, we are currently working on a plan of action, and once we feel confident that we have a solid plan to ensure the safety of all our students, then we will request permission from our superintendent and our school board so that we may return to practice in person. At this time, our coaches are continuing to provide guidance, and they're meeting with our athletes and coaches through Zoom and other social media outlets. They're practicing at home, as I understand, to stay in shape. But once we are required to come back to in-person training, we will be doing weekly COVID-19 screenings to ensure that they're not displaying any symptoms or have been in contact with anybody that has those symptoms. If they do, they will be asked to stay at home. We will be doing temperature checks. Those will be done daily by our RGCC ISD staff, our coaches. We will be having also hand sanitation stations indoors and outdoors. We'll be having procedures for entry and exit so that, to minimize exposure. Our students will be assigned to small groups to one coach to ensure that they remain in that one group throughout the entire offseason program, also to minimize exposure of our athletes. I will be also having to prepare our staff. All our coaches will be meeting with myself and our athletic coordinators and our trainers to ensure they are well-informed and prepared to bring our athletes back, okay, to ensure they know the procedures and protocol that we're going to be having in place. Our athletes will then be called in small groups by their coaches to also go through orientation to ensure they also know and understand the procedures of how to come in and how to exit and how to use the sanitation stations, temperature checks, and how to answer those questions on those questionnaires. Okay? More importantly also is that, you know, we're going to be relying on our maintenance staff also and as well as our coaches to help us sanitize all our offices, all our equipment on a daily basis, and of course, before athletes are allowed to come in. All this information will be shared on our district webpage, rgccisd.org, and our coaches will also be communicating with our athletes and our parents to ensure that they answer any question they may have. With that being said, if we stay safe and we don't have any, anybody, for that matter, any athletes or coaches test positive, I am positive and I'm hopeful that we may start fall sports in August. With that being said, I wish everybody the best and stay safe out there. Thank you, Ms. Garza.
And again, I want to emphasize that our band directors are also working on a plan. Pretty much, their guidelines are through the UIL guidelines, and their plan would be the same as our sports guidelines. And once we get that information ready, we will share it with our families and our community. Mr. Salinas?
Ms. Garza, thank you, Coach. Thank you for your information. Lo que dijo el coach es que lo más importante para mí es de que los coaches mantienen contacto a diario con sus deportistas en la casa por métodos virtuales. O sea, que la comunicación ahí está. Y también él asegura que la sanidad y la limpieza del ambiente es algo muy importante para él. Que el estado ha puesto ciertos reglamentos y todo, y se están comunicando entre él y el UIL, y todo eso. Así es de que no hay ningún peligro. Y sobre todo, se está revisando continuamente que los coaches y los estudiantes deportistas estén en la mejor salud. Está preparando procedimientos para que los muchachos sepan lo que van a hacer cuando llegan ahí, la orientación que va a recibir, sobre todo, qué es el procedimiento para llegar y para salir, y que van a trabajar en grupos chicos con sus coaches. Eso fue algo muy importante. Padres de familia que están escuchando, ustedes que tienen hijos que están en el deporte, pueden tener la seguridad que en el deporte se va a hacer lo máximo para tener un ambiente limpieísimo, que todos lo van a estar limpiando lo más posible, que se están siguiendo los reglamentos. Que el señor Ramírez está en contacto con todos sus coaches y coordinadores para asegurar que los grupos chicos que se mantengan en el mejor programa de sanidad posible. Más o menos, Coach. Ahí lo llegamos.
Sí, you're right. It's a work in progress, and we'll continue to communicate with our parents and our student athletes as we develop these procedures, correct?
Y que siguen comunicándose con los padres de familia a través de todo esto. Y que con el favor de Dios, en agosto, Dios mediante, pueden empezar los programas deportivos.
Once we do open, hopefully, if we do start our sports in August, then we'll address all the issues regarding ticket sales and fans in the stands. I know there's a million and one question about if we're going to be allowed to have fans in the stands, but we'll address all those concerns once we get there. For now, we're preparing just to have a facility open for athletes for summer strength and conditioning.
Y que cuando empiece todo, se le va a avisar al público qué es lo que se puede hacer en el estadio, cómo le vamos a hacer. Yo soy uno de los que va a estar muy interesado, Coach, en eso también.
At this time, I would like to acknowledge our food service department, Patsy Ramírez and her entire crew for doing an outstanding job in providing meals to our children. They have been at the worksite every single day, working long hours to make sure that we feed our children. Again, there are not enough words to express the gratitude that we have to this department. And we know that a lot of our families are experiencing hard times, and we hope that this help at least alleviates some relief because it is heartbreaking to know that so many of us are going through so many hardships. And with that, Ms. Ramírez will share our summer school lunch program. Ms. Ramírez?
Good morning, everyone. I hope everyone is doing well and staying safe. We have been receiving so many phone calls and inquiries regarding the PEBT, which is a pandemic electronic benefit transfer, and I'm going to do my best to go ahead and summarize that for you this morning. PEBT is a one-time benefit for families that have lost access to free and reduced-price meals due to the school closures related to COVID-19. Children enrolled at RGCC ISD, where all meals are served at no charge, are eligible for the one-time payment of $285. Families that are currently receiving benefits do not need to apply. Those families already received those benefits on their Lone Star card automatically this past May 22nd. All others that are enrolled, all other children, are eligible for that $285 and will need to apply. The application period will be open from June 1st through June 30th, and that application portal will be available to parents. Once we receive that link, we will go ahead and send it out to you. You're supposed to get it the first week of June, so hopefully, there will be no delays in getting that out to you all. Once you go ahead and apply, the Department of the Health and Human Services Commission will go ahead and determine our verifier eligibility, and once you have been verified, you will receive a Texas EBT card in the mail. Again, parents, you will go ahead and apply once that link is made available to you. We are working very hard to make sure that we get that to you as soon as possible. I also want to mention that if you do not have access to a computer, do not worry. The Health and Human Services Commission is going to go ahead and release a phone number that you can call to get assistance in applying for that benefit. Another thing that I want to mention to all the parents and families out there is that the school district is going to continue to offer free meals for kids this summer. Meals will be available every Monday, Wednesday, and Friday from 11:00 to 12:30 p.m. at a curb site near you. We are offering those meals at Ringled Middle School, Ringled Elementary, Inojosa Elementary, La Unión, and Alto Bonito Elementary. Parents that wish to pick up meals without their children present will have to go ahead and present one of the following: a birth certificate, a verification of enrollment, or an actual student ID card. Once you go ahead and present that information, we will go ahead and verify you. You will receive a form, a neon-yellow form, that you're going to go ahead and display on your dash, and you can come by any time to pick up those meals without your kids, and as long as you have that form, there should be no problems. Again, if anyone has any questions or concerns regarding, you know, anything that pertains to the child nutrition program, please feel free to contact us at the COVID-19 phone directory that Ms. Garza mentioned. You can also visit our webpage or our Facebook, Instagram, or Twitter page at RGCI Real Meals Rock. Thank you very much. Thank you, Ms. Garza.
Mr. Salinas?
Wow. Y no le había dicho a mi Ramírez. Y yo chequé la comida de uno de los niños. Dije, vamos a ver qué es lo que viene en la comida. Me dijo el papá, ¿para qué los checas? No dejó ni para las hormigas.[1520.50][1520.50](Risas) Eran nuggets. Eran nuggets y apple slices. Pero, como dijo el papá, no quedó nada. Así es que, y fue en un día que no sabía qué decir. A ver, y estoy, quedé muy impresionado. Lo que dice la señora, que va a haber un beneficio que se va a hacer una vez, nada más. Donde vas a recibir un beneficio de $285 del Estado de Texas. Y este, pero es algo que tienes que tener. Si tienes la tarjeta de Lone Star ahorita, no hay ningún problema. Te entendí bien, Patsy. Si tienes el Lone Star card, automáticamente ya cualificas.
You will automatically receive those benefits.
Okay, automáticamente, en virtud de tener tu tarjeta de Lone Star. Pero si tienes que aplicar, tienes que esperarte hasta que la oficina de la señora Ramírez reciba un link, un link. Es vocabulario aquí del, las computadoras. Cuando ella reciba en ese link del estado, te lo van a mandar a ti a través de los periódicos o a través del website del distrito. Pero te vas a dar cuenta de una manera o de otra, y así vas a poder aplicar. Y este, vas a, es muy importante, y ojalá que puedas recibir ese beneficio también por la situación económica por la que, el cual estamos pasando. Y este, y sobre todo, si no vas a, cuando vas a levantar a la comida, sería mejor que llevaras los niños contigo, ¿verdad? Pero si no los puedes llevar, entonces tienes que llevar. Por ley, tienes que llevar una identificación contigo, la prueba de nacimiento del niño, de que está en, está inscrito en esa escuela, y todo. Pero tienes que tener algo, y si no lo, si no lo tienes, necesitas ir a la oficina de ella para informarte o para que pueda recibir los detalles. Más o menos es eso, Patsy.
That's correct. Parents that go ahead and pick up meals, you know, without their children present, will need to have some type of identification or one of those forms that we require. And once they go ahead and present those forms, we verify them, and they will only be verified once. They do not need to be bringing those documents with them every time.
Nomás una vez lo van a verificar. Es muy importante lo que dijo la señora Ramírez. Una vez hay que verificarlo, y ya no te lo vuelven a pedir, porque ya están inscritos, ¿verdad? Ya tienen todo, pero que es un programa muy excepcional, como dijo Ms. Garza. Y sobre todo, y yo mismo vi que sí está. Muy bonito trabajo, Patsy.
Thank you, Ms. Garza.
This concludes our event for today. Thank you so much for tuning in, and I hope that your questions were answered. If you have any questions, please, again, do not hesitate to call our departments or our campuses for any questions. We will post again the COVID-19 directory in our Facebook page, but it is posted on our school webpage. Now, Mr. Eliezar Velázquez, our board president, will do some closing remarks. Thank you so much for joining us.
Good morning. Thank you for tuning in to RGCC ISD Virtual Town Hall Meeting. I would like to thank Superintendent of Schools Bill Magarza and all department directors for providing important information to our community. Please know that as board members, our priority has always been and will always be the safety and well-being of our children and families. Gracias por sintonizar a la primera junta virtual del Distrito Escolar de Río Grande City para la comunidad. Quisiera agradecer a la Superintendiente de Escuelas, Bill Magarza, y a todos los directores de los departamentos por proporcionar información importante a nuestra comunidad. Tenga en cuenta que como miembros de la Mesa Directiva, nuestra prioridad siempre ha sido y siempre será la seguridad y el bienestar de nuestros niños y sus familias. Mil gracias. Su servidor, Eliezar Velázquez.